Upon retirement, they could receive 30% of their income for life.
I can afford it, and it just gives me a little bit more to look forward to.
A little something extra in the nest egg. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Monthly payments to retirees could arrive in addition to social security and other benefits. Well, it's an opportunity for Angelenos to receive direct help and take advantage of some services offered through the city attorney's office. Rasha Goel has more on a program that's helping the city's justice system branch out to the community.
Today, we're focused on our dispute resolution program, which brings members of the community who volunteer in our office together with those who are confronting disputes and resolves them in an amicable way. Neighbor to neighbor, complainant with police officers, tenant and landlord.
At this dispute resolution event, LA City Attorney Mike Fuhrer wants you to take advantage of mediation services before taking matters into your own hands. It's part of a Community Justice Initiative program to highlight alternative options to help solve disputes. These mediation services are offered at no cost.
Each one of these disputes can develop into a physical altercation, which becomes a criminal matter, and we are helping through our community service mediation to resolve small future arguments.
Essentially, it's a way to use the justice system to transform the neighborhoods and prevent confrontations from escalating, especially those between the police and the communities they patrol.
I would have to say that south of the 10, especially the south central, south LA areas, are primarily the more volatile for aggression toward police officers within the LAPD.
Officials say it takes a partnership and collaborative effort among various community and law enforcement agencies to promote these services.
In the room today are members from the city attorney's office, from the fire department, from the police department, volunteers in our dispute resolution program, nonprofit organizations, community activists. We're all convening together.
Officials say there are a variety of reasons why Angelenos may want to consider mediation through the city attorney's office. No costly attorney fees or court expenses. Neutral mediator helps with negotiation. Mediation takes place outside the overcrowded court system, and the goal, a mutually acceptable resolution for all parties. And even more help is on the way. Community Justice Initiative will host day-long events regarding other relevant issues over the next few months. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on the dispute resolution program, you can log on to lacityattorney.org or you can call 213-978-1880. A favorite LA landmark for nature and fitness enthusiasts is going off the grid for months as city leaders launch the Runyon Canyon Water System Improvement Project. Anna Marcos gets some reaction from the locals.
It's one of the more scenic, popular, and accessible LA parks, friendly to both dogs But starting in April, the park will be a lot less welcoming for visitors. All the trails and most areas will close down as city workers begin a water improvement project to help with flood and fire control.
It's kind of like a LA landmark, you know? It's almost like closing the beaches for the summer, so it's a shock for sure.
One mile of pipe which runs through the park will have to be replaced.
A few months ago, we actually had a water pipe burst in Appian Way in Laurel Canyon, just up the hill. And not only did it create a big sinkhole in the middle of the road, but the water traveled down and destroyed two homes. This one-mile length of pipeline below Runyon Canyon already has 17 to 35 identifiable leaks. So that's when I say it's a disaster waiting to happen.
It's kind of got to be done. We'll just probably end up going to Griffith.
One good piece of news for those who use the park, the yoga field near the entrance will remain open during construction.
But you do know the yoga will stay open?
That's a positive, but I like to run the mountain, so I'm bummed, definitely.
I'm not too much of a yoga person. My girlfriend is, but that's not really my thing.
Besides improving water quality and fire protection, city workers hope to repave the entire trail and put in a stormwater collection system.
When we're done, we want to make sure that the project, the park that we leave behind, is in better shape and looks better than the park that's here right now.
It makes me kind of sad. It's kind of crazy. We come up here three times a week, probably.
The park reopens in July. In the meantime, a little yoga bliss just might help fight those Runyon Canyon blues. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Pipe Project is a team effort by the LADWP and the Department of Recreation and Parks. Another piece in the metro light rail network falls into place as city and county leaders open the Gold Line Rail Extension, which will take riders deep into the San Gabriel Valley. Anna Marcos hops on for the ride.
LA's Metro is opening the doors to a whole new way of commuting through more of LA County.
So today, Arcadia, Monrovia, Duarte, Irwindale, and Azusa join Metro's Transit Revolution. That's why we're here today.
City leaders hopped on board at the grand opening of the Metro Gold Line Extension, which now links the San Gabriel Valley to LA's Light Rail Transportation Network. The 11-and-a-half-mile extension makes the Gold Line the longest light rail route at 31 miles, and it covers stops from LA's Union Station through Pasadena all the way to Azusa, a total of 27 stops.
It means less congestion as we're going, and I'm excited to be here today with my daughter. We're going to ride the first train and make a little bit of history.
I think it's fantastic. Just like most people, the 210 has become a parking lot.
And there's even better news. Regional and city leaders hope to get funding for an extra extension even further into the inland empire. That is now in the design stages.
Are we going to stop in Azusa?
No!
Are we going to go at least to Claremont?
Yeah!
Are we going to go to Ontario?
Yeah!
Mayor Eric Garcetti says the extension will be good not only for San Gabriel Valley residents, but for all Angelenos.
We want to come in here. We want to use Ontario as an airport, not just LAX. We want to see a vibrant region that eases congestion for everybody.
This is definitely a greener alternative than the 210 freeway.
This extension becomes the first rail line paid for with Measure R transportation funds to open to the public. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And city leaders in May will open a new rail line all the way to Santa Monica as well. While three African-American women were honored for blazing a trail in LA's transportation infrastructure, Gil Reyes has more on their achievements at a special breakfast in downtown.
Two by land, one by air. Black female standouts in the field of public transit discuss inspiration during African-American History Month.
I think about people like Bessie Coleman, and Bessie was the first female aviator, but also African-American female aviator in the country. And she went to France and learned how to speak French in order to get her pilot's license because she couldn't do that in the U.S., so I think she's a testament to perseverance.
Perseverance, also a quality found in Los Angeles World Airport's executive director, Deborah Flint. Flint, who's helping to reinvent LAX with an ambitious $8.5 billion renovation, is honored at this breakfast in downtown LA. Also honored, Long Beach Transit Deputy Chief Deborah Johnson. Johnson, who's working to expand Long Beach's electric bus fleet to reduce pollution, says networking is key to her success.
Know what's going on, having the opportunity to interface with those in the community, because oftentimes, if you stay within your own certain area, one may not be as knowledgeable and adept at what's going on.
African-American women paving the way for improved mass transit. Over at LA Metro, where five major rail projects are underway, Metro Deputy Chief and Honoree Stephanie Wiggins says mentors paved the way for her success.
Here at Metro, I've been fortunate to be mentored by our chair, Margaret Lee Thomas, our board member, Jackie Dupont Walker, even Supervisor Solis. In the short time that she's been on the Board of Supervisors has proven to be a mentor. So mentors come in all shapes and sizes, and they're truly a blessing.
In the careers of female transportation trailblazers, in downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
All three honorees want to see more opportunities for women and small businesses to improve mass transit in LA County. While the Eliso Canyon gas leak has gone down as one of the worst gas spills in California history, the leaking gas well, which started near Porter Ranch last October, was plugged several weeks ago, but as Anna Marcos reports, the leak has left a dirty problem in its wake. Anna?
Yana, the Eliso Canyon gas leak may be capped, but the problems are far from over. This park, Holly Burnson Park, is now closed to media and residents alike as crews work to clean up an oily residue left by the leak.
How can you breathe in motor oil and think that that's okay?
The oily brown spots have appeared on the outside of homes, and now residents returning to Porter Ranch after months of living in hotels have discovered that parks where their children play are also contaminated. Cleaning crews with face masks are cleaning up the mess at the Holly Burnson Park. The Eliso Canyon gas leak lasted four months and caused the relocation of thousands of families.
So you don't feel safe enough to return to your home yet?
No, I do not. We do not know what was in the gas. It is a proprietary trade secret.
The oil residue problem started back in December.
We were attempting to stop the leak by pumping liquids directly down the leaking well, which didn't work too well, as you might recall, and so there was some blowback of material.
Residents complained about the residue then, but say the gas company did nothing until community members discovered residue at the park and complained to the Parks Department.
I thought the county had given it a clean bill of health.
The county had given it a clean bill of health, and the county did not want to come back out to reexamine it until Parks Department demanded they do so with the pushing of the local residents.
But the kids are playing on that stuff.
It's not going to hurt you. Public health says don't touch it. We agree. You know, it's not going to kill you.
But officials monitoring the air for methane, benzene, and other chemicals disagree. They say long-term health effects are still unknown, and they're still trying to figure out what exactly was in the gas leak. Even now that the well is plugged, they say methane levels at times rise to three times the normal levels.
We've never seen anything even remotely like this.
Is it catastrophic?
Oh, yeah.
They send these stupid flyers out every week, and they say safety's our priority. That's their motto. What a joke! What a joke!
The good part of this story is people from Porter Ranch are starting to come home, and that's a good thing.
I'm not asking for anything monetary. I'm just saying, clean up your mess.
SoCal gas officials will also visit 140 homes to check out complaints of oily residue there, and other parks are also scheduled for cleaning. Meanwhile, the Holly Burnson Park remains closed until further notice. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Anyone wanting to report oily residue on their property can visit elisoupdates.com. While a new report says Los Angeles World Airport still has a long way to go to improve the passenger experience, city officials hope an online tool makes it easier for immigrants in LA to become U.S. citizens, and a Sun Valley family rises above the ashes. All these stories in City Beat. LA World Airport, the city-owned entity that operates LAX, still has significant work to do to address impending traffic jams in and around the terminals, to upgrade passenger experiences, and to improve airport business practices. That's according to a report issued by LA City Controller Ron Galperin. Consultants warn that the $5 billion modernization program to overhaul Terminal 2, plans to add a consolidated rental car facility, and link the whole airport to a new metro station via 2.2-mile automatic people mover will greatly increase traffic and reduce parking in LAX's central terminal area during construction. Issues that LAUW has not sufficiently identified or adequately addressed, Galperin said. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently announced a new program with the Los Angeles Public Library to help immigrant Angelenos apply for American citizenship. Citizenship Works 2.0 is a website and mobile app designed to give lawful permanent residents step-by-step instructions as they guide through their naturalization applications. The new pilot program is part of the mayor's Step Forward L.A. initiative, which focuses on encouraging more than 350,000 legal permanent resident immigrants in LA to become U.S. citizens. Four library branches have teamed up with the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to dedicate space, train staff, computers, and other resources to assist with the use of Citizenship Works 2.0. This pilot builds on the resources already available in citizenship corners located in all 73 library branches, where residents can access tools, sample test materials, instructional DVDs, and more.
What a better place than the public library in a community to welcome new Americans in and to provide information and answers to questions that they have.
Selected officials and community members helped celebrate the grand opening of the Centro Batonero Mazatlan Restaurant in Sun Valley. The opening comes in a space next door to another restaurant by the same owner that was gutted by arsonists several months ago. Now, the owners decided to rebuild and create a new business, providing employment for many of its displaced workers. The restaurant owner said he was able to push forward thanks to the community and Council District 6.
Being that we have the support of the community and our local politicians, it gives us the fuel to come back.
The councilwoman makes that one of her main priorities, is to make sure that businesses are taken care of, whether it's through supporting them and getting small loans, or to support them in getting their feet off the ground.
Renewable energy is helping former felons renew their lives. As Gil Reyes reports, the future looks bright when harnessing the sun.
A solar panel installation program is providing second chances to people like David Andrade. Andrade had spent nine years behind bars.
I just told myself that after doing all that time, I grew up in there, I want a career. I want a job. I want to stay out of trouble, and I want a family. My friend told me about Homeboy Industries, so did a family member, so I decided to come down, I checked them out.
For more than 25 years, Homeboy Industries has helped former gang bangers re-enter the workforce. Its founder, Father Greg Boyle, has helped put people to work through the Homeboy Bakery, Homegirl Cafe, also the Homeboy Solar Panel Installation Training Program. The big announcement today, more than 100 former felons have been chosen for installation training this year, thanks in part to a $100,000 grant from AT&amp;T.
As a former LAPD officer, now reserve officer, I understand that it's vital for former offenders to have good opportunities. Rarely did I ever arrest an individual who had a good-paying job.
And so for each one of you who has had the strength to turn around your life, know that at City Hall, we promise to be there with you every step of the way.
And also to collaborate with groups like Homeboy and others who are making these changes possible, finding training, providing employment opportunities.
Last year, more than 80 people graduated from training at East Los Angeles Skill Center before landing good-paying jobs. Andrade has a job too, as Assistant Program Coordinator for the Solar Panel Installation Program. He helps trainees find the confidence to succeed. In Chinatown, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The program has trained more than 500 people in solar panel installation over the past decade. While a trip to the zoo doesn't get more up close and personal than this, kids at the LA Zoo got treated to a new type of touchy-feely experience, the hippo encounter. Anna Marcos takes us there.
This mouth-gaping first encounter with a hippo would be enough to make anyone think twice about getting closer, but the kids are game as they take part in the LA Zoo's new hippo encounter, a hands-on, behind-the-scenes experience where you get to watch the creatures eat, learn about them, touch them, and get very up close and personal indeed.
I've touched different kinds of animals before, like furry, scaly, but I've never touched like bumpy and hard before. The sweat, I didn't really want to touch that. I thought it was a little gross.
They have a special sweat that they secrete that keeps them moist when they come out of the water. It protects their skin. It also has some healing properties in it.
The two hippos here are Baby Rosie, who was born one and a half years ago, weighing 60 pounds. She now weighs more than 1,100 pounds, and close by is Mama Mara, a 3,500-pound giant.
People really enjoy it. They have a great time. They're actually surprised and shocked at how big they are and how friendly they are up close.
Well, it seems a safe bet that a friendly hippo is better than an unfriendly one. Kids, big and small, came away with more confidence and more insight when it comes to befriending the world's third-largest land mammal. But oops, there's the gaping jaw again. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The hippo encounter happens at the LA Zoo every Saturday and Sunday at noon. Tickets are $15, and that's on top of the zoo's regular admission, and it's better to make reservations ahead of time. While commuters at Union Station are being transported not only to their destination, but to a zen-like environment that calms the soul. The smooth sound of the horn echoes through downtown's majestic Union Station, uplifting the spirit of daily commuters and giving them an opportunity to relax and unwind. The calming ambiance is part of a month-long series put on by online radio station Dublab and Metro Art.
We wanted to simply offer this brief inspiration for some passing by and for others to sit down and enjoy the music.
Music for train stations was inspired by music for airports, a collection of ambient sound created by Brian Eno, a musician who spent anxious and boring hours waiting for flights. He created the music to help soothe his nerves, and now his creation is helping soothe the nerves of other travelers.
The series is about adding a more relaxing environment to what is a kind of stressful environment, which is a train station where people are rushing around from place to place. So we're adding this layer of sounds that's a little bit different than what you would hear on a normal day.
The series, which features a DJ and a live musical performance, is both an homage to Eno and a contemporary interpretation of his concept, applied within the architectural splendor of Union Station.
The idea of music for train stations is music that blends in the background, music that it's made more to break the stresses, the anxieties of traveling, of being in a rush, meeting a deadline, getting to a place on time.
A musical departure for both travelers and visitors alike. The music plays from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. every Friday in March. Well, it's your last chance to see the work of an iconic architect up close, celebrating the life of a female pioneer during Women's History Month, and enjoying the classical sounds of German composer Johann Sebastian Bach during your commute. All this in this week's Things to Do. Frank Gehry's iconic architecture has transformed cityscapes all over the world, our own included thanks to Walt Disney Concert Hall. LACMA is honoring the LA-based architect with a career-spanning retrospective. Though Gehry's creativity seems so effortless, The Simpsons lampooned his design process as simply crumpling up a piece of paper. There's actually a considerable amount of technology behind his works. The exhibition focuses on the development of these digital design and fabrication programs along with the architect's relationship with urbanism. The exhibit comes to a close on March 20th, so don't miss out. For more, visit lacma.org. March is Women's History Month, and this year's theme is "Women Inspiring Innovation Through Imagination," celebrating women in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Visit the North Hollywood Amelia Earhart Branch Library and pay tribute to Amelia Earhart, the famous female aviator after which the branch was renamed, who lived in Toluca Lake in the years prior to her disappearance. Earhart flew alone across the Atlantic, the first female to do so. She also helped form an organization for female pilots, counseled women at universities on career paths, and was a supporter of equal rights for women. She vanished in the Pacific Ocean in 1937 while attempting to fly around the world. The North Hollywood Library is located at 5211 Tahanga Avenue in North Hollywood. As far as obscure holidays go, this one is arguably the most sophisticated. Founded by cellist Dale Henderson under the streets of New York City, Bach in the Subways Day takes place annually on the birthday of German composer Johann Sebastian Bach to bring public enthusiasm to the beautiful and increasingly forgotten art of classical music. On March 21st, as well as the previous two days, soundtrack your commute with free performances throughout Union Station, train platforms, and other public spaces, with everything from an organ recital to a flute choir. Visit bachinthesubways.org for performance details and locations. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacaview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hey buddy, what's shakin'? We're not prepared for an earthquake! I love the rain! We're not prepared for a flood!
Sure, in the movies, this is all pretend, but in real life, you gotta be prepared for any type of an emergency. You can't predict, but you can prepare.
Yeah!
How'd you know? The ball called.
Be prepared at laft.org.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, items thirty-seven and thirty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Uh, yes, cards on item thirty-seven.
Okay, let's vote on the, uh, the remaining item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I want to look over to Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Price, uh, to see if you guys are ready with your presentation. And if you are, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, Councilmember Price and I are joined by the Consul General of El Salvador and Los Angeles, Mercedes Lopez Peña, along with Carlos Vacarano, the Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund, otherwise known as SALAF, and also Sandra Rosato of Clinico Romero, among other guests in the delegation, the group of delegation today. As someone who represents the neighborhood where Clinico Romero is, there in the Westlake District, and as someone who had the great privilege of going to El Salvador last year for the beatification of, um, uh, Monsignor Oscar Romero in San Salvador, I am just very, very pleased to be presenting this, um, uh, commemoration today. March twenty-fourth will mark the thirty-sixth anniversary of Monsignor Oscar A. Romero's martyrdom. We recognize Monsignor Romero's advocacy for the poor and the persecuted, which made him the voice of the voiceless. And despite the death threats against his life in the midst of a civil war, Archbishop Romero continued his campaign for human rights. The city of Los Angeles has the largest concentration of Salvadorans outside of the Republic of El Salvador. A large percentage of those residing in the Ninth Council District, the Thirteenth Council District, and also the First Council District, and across the whole city. A- as a representative of the city of Los Angeles, it gives me pleasure to honor the contributions, the social, cultural, economic, and political contributions by the Salvadoran community to the city of Los Angeles. And know that Mr. Price and I are committed to working with the Salvadoran leadership in Los Angeles to improve the well-being of our Salvadoran brothers and sisters in our community. Me siento orgulloso de estar aquí con todos ustedes a rendir homenaje a la vida y enseñanzas de Monsignor Oscar A. Romero. Porque hoy honramos la vida de un hombre que durante muchas décadas y décadas pasadas de su vida se ha destacado como una figura de esperanza para todos nuestros hermanos salvadoreños. Estamos dedicados a mejorar el bienestar y luchar por los derechos humanos de nuestra comunidad salvadoreña en Los Angeles. At this time, I would like our esteemed colleague representing the new Ninth, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Councilman, for your, for your leadership and for your, um, presence here this morning to not just stand with you, with the Consul General, uh, and, uh, others here in remembrance of Monsignor Oscar Romero. Today, we reflect on Monsignor Romero's legacy and teachings that we should all keep in mind as we govern our constituencies. Particularly as Romero focused on promoting nonviolence and the humane treatment of all people, especially those most marginalized in society during the El Salvadori, El Salvador's most difficult era in history. Although Monsignor Romero's life was tragically cut short in nineteen eighty, his legacy lives on, both in the United States and in El Salvador. I had the distinct pleasure of joining SALAF on a trip to El Salvador in two thousand fourteen, where I was able to see with my own eyes the principles and values taught by Monsignor Romero are still alive and well today. Whether we were visiting a local church in the center of town or at a remote elementary school in the middle of a jungle, his teachings give a sense of hope and a better life ahead. It was incredibly, uh, incredibly moving trip that I will not soon forget. I want to take this opportunity to thank Carlos for his tireless work in the community, particularly District Nine, where I represent the fastest-growing population of El Salvadorians outside of El Salvador. I am proud to call you a partner in our community, as your dedication has empowered thousands of Angelinos, particularly our young children, who with your guidance have been afforded amazing opportunities. Particularly as they pursue a higher education and maintain their dedication to serving their community. Keep up the good work.
And now, I'd like to give a warm welcome and round of applause to our Consul General, Ms. Lopez Peña.
All right, welcome.
En nombre del gobierno del Salvador, a través del consulado del Salvador, en la ciudad más importante donde se aglutina más de un millón y medio de salvadoreños, mujeres y hombres.
In the name of the government of El Salvador, in the city that more than a million Salvadorans live and reside.
Queremos agradecer estos gestos y estas expresiones de apoyo a nuestra comunidad.
We want to thank you for all these gestures of support to our community.
Precisamente apoyando estos esfuerzos y el ejemplo que ahora conmemoramos este veinticuatro de marzo que viene vamos a conmemorar el treinta y seis aniversario de la muerte y martirio de uno de los, de los obispos en el mundo más importante.
Precisely, uh, helping us commemorate, uh, the death of the mart- martyrdom of one of the archobys, Monsignor, uh, Oscar Romero.
Treinta y seis años de situaciones muy difíciles para nuestro país, para El Salvador, que ha enfrentado una cantidad de situaciones, guerras, inundaciones, terremotos.
Thirty-six years of, uh, very difficult situations in my country, El Salvador. We have encountered a lot of situations like earthquake, um, a lot of things.
Guerras. Y que, y que precisamente el ejemplo de Monsignor Romero es lo que nos ha guiado a mantener la fe, la esperanza, y el ímpetu por lograr resolver las situaciones difíciles para nuestro pueblo.
And precisely the encouragement of Monsignor de Salvador is has, uh, Romero has helped us and encouraged us to go on and, um, proceed with, uh, sorry, with all the troubles.
Así es que esta semana vamos a mantener una cantidad de actividades a nivel de las organizaciones comunitarias y nuestro consulado acá en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Y así es que pedimos y agradecemos precisamente a nuestros concejales y a todo el consejo por estas expresiones de apoyo a este trabajo tan arduo que hace nuestra comunidad salvadoreña en Los Ángeles.
So, precisely this week, we're going to have a lot of events and we want to thank both councilmembers, thank you so much for your support, and we want to invite you, councilmembers, and all the community to join us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, and before I introduce, uh, our good friend who really represents the best of, of El Salvador and the heart, the conscience, and the soul of, of El Salvador, our friend Carlos Vacarano, I want to acknowledge members of my staff, my Legislative Director, David Hiron, who is a Salvadoran American, and also my specialist at my City Hall Office, William Ayala, also of Salvadoran descent. Uh, so now I'd like to introduce our good friend Carlos Vacarano.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Price. Members of the City Council, thank you so much. Once again, we're here to celebrate another year of the life of our, uh, dear Monsignor A. Romero. On behalf of SALAF, Clinica Monsignor Romero, and this, and Los Angeles and Salvador Sister Seed Organization, we want to thank you for supporting this, uh, naming March twenty-fourth the day of remembrance of Monsignor Romero. As El Salvador faces critical times, uh, right now, uh, such as the unaccompanied minors crisis, thousands of children are leaving El Salvador because of the difficulties that we're going through. We always call on Monsignor Romero to guide us and continue the struggle for social justice, for peace. We look forward to continue working with you next year as we're going to be celebrating one, the one-hundred birthday of Monsignor Romero, and we hope that we can get your support to name one of the streets, the one in front of, uh, Plaza Monsignor Romero, the Monsignor Romero Street. So I'm looking forward to your support next year, all of the members of the City Council, and for those members who have visited El Salvador, Councilmember Blumenfield, Councilmember Cedillo, Jose Weisar, and others. We thank you and invite others to join me next time. Thank you again.
Thank you, Carlos.
Mr. O'Farrell, I have two members on the queue. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you, I just wanted to, uh, add my voice, uh, to the chorus here praising you for bringing this, uh, today to celebrate Oscar Romero, who means so much for, for democracy, for human rights, for peace. Um, you know, and, and Carlos, I also especially want to acknowledge you. It was more than fifteen years ago that we went to El Salvador together after the, uh, the big earthquake in oh-one, and we're delivering aid. Uh, and, you know, going with you back then really connected me to, to that region and, and to better understanding the, the history and what a great man Mr. Romero was. So I'm, I'm pleased to be here to celebrate uh, and to, to join in the chorus of, of today, and so thank you very much.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I thought you were done, okay. And we have another member on the queue as well, go ahead.
Okay, so what I'd like to do now is, um, introduce, um, Sandra Rosato, who is the Executive Director of, uh, Clinico Romero there in Westlake, and who's been Executive Director now for about three years. Um, so, uh, without further ado, Sandra Rosato. You're welcome.
Good morning, uh, President Weisa and esteemed Council. I'm with great gratitude standing here, and I want to thank Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. So thank you for all your continued support, and Councilmember Karen Price and the other councilmembers. My name is Sandra Rosato, I'm the Executive Director of Clinica Monsignor Romero. Clinic founded in nineteen eighty-three to bring culturally sensitive quality healthcare to Central Americans. Monsignor Romero once said, "Transcendent from the human heart is entering into the reality of the poor and of the sick. It is going to share with them," he said. "And from the very heart of misery, of the situation, to transcend it, to elevate it, and to say to them, 'You are trash.' It is to say exactly the opposite, 'You are valuable.'" To speak of Monsignor Romero today, it is also to shed light of the horrible violence that is going on in our country. With young people being killed and women being raped every day due to the gang violence. There are no jobs to stop these bullets. This is the reality of El Salvador and our patients, our direct patients of Clinico Romero. These cruelties are shared with our providers, with our counselors, with our community organizing staff. To honor Monsignor Romero is to be a voice of the voiceless. In his honor, may you do the same for each of your constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Cedillo?
Just let me, uh, applaud my colleagues for bringing this matter to our attention. Obviously, uh, Monsignor Oscar Romero is a giant for peace and a model and template for how public and social discourse should be conducted. We can learn a lot from him here in the United States, and particularly those who aspire to be, uh, the president of this country. Let me also add, uh, Carlos Vacarano, it's always a dear to see you. Your leadership is ceaseless. Your tenacious commitment is admirable, and I'm always happy to see you, uh, here today. And for the Consul General and the, um, Director, bienvenido aquí en su salón en la ciudad de Los Angeles, el segundo Capitolio de todos los salvys que viven acá. Este también quiero, uh, dar un recognition, uh, Mario Betran, for his incredible work in my office over the years in making sure that our office was a connection to the Salvadoran community, both here in Los Angeles and in El Salvador. Bienvenido, and felicidades a mis colegas. Thank you.
That concludes the members on the queue, sir.
Um, so once again, here is to the life, the teachings, and the legacy of Monsignor Oscar A. Romero. Congratulations, felicidades, thank you, gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Price, Mr. O'Farrell, for that wonderful recognition, congratulations. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item five.
And item five called special for Congress.
Mr. Walsh, item five, sir?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number, uh, five. This has got to be the most, the dumbest agenda item I've ever seen, and I've been coming here for fifteen to twenty years. Uh, this is the way they're going to reduce the gangs in this neighborhood on Gavina and Hardy is by establishing names for the private driveways. So, and, uh, we have these names, Angeles Trailway, Villa Sereno Drive, Gangster Street, Eighteenth Street, uh, Serrano Way. Ladies and gentlemen, this is dumb.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, that concludes cards on this item, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's move on to item twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven called special by Councilmember Cedillo.
Mr. Cedillo?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's move on to item thirty-four.
Item thirty-four called special by Mr. Price.
Mr. Price is in the back. I, I have one card, can we take cards on this item? Donna Pierman, item thirty-four.
This, hello? This is again to tell you that we need to have the right to bear arms because it shows that we are again, um, people can get murdered, so, um, and by the way, seventy-five thousand dollars, nobody's, niggas get stitches, they won't, they won't bring it in for the death, for the, they'll get killed, and seventy-five thousand dollars is not worthwhile getting killed. But we need to have our, uh, ability to, um, have, um, weapons, the Second Amendment right, and then we won't have to worry about so many unsolved murders because people will be wondering whether we're caring and whether they'll get shot. So, um, okay, that said on that, I don't agree with this. Thank you.
Good, Mr. Price?
President, uh, on Friday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, Clifton Hibbert Junior and his friend Kenneth Patterson were found gunned down in the Forty-second Hundred Block of Figueroa, uh, in South Los Angeles. Clifton was the son of Jamaican immigrants. He was a hard worker who never had been involved in gangs. He was just a few, uh, few weeks away from graduating from Cal State Northridge. Uh, his mother, Donna Brown, with us today, has never given up on justice for her son. She joins us here today along with Clifton's sister, Ayanna Brown. It's important that we don't forget the lives of these two young men whose lights were distinguished too soon, and we always seek justice for those who needlessly lost their lives in an act of violence. Ask for your support, members of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We have two family members who'd like to say a few words, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Price, thank you for having, for sharing that, for presenting that motion, and I want to thank all of the councilmembers for having us, for bringing this motion ahead, uh, to the, uh, office. As again, we are here, uh, it has now been, uh, over seven years since my brother was murdered on Forty-second of Figueroa, who was returning from, uh, his, uh, college party, uh, getting ready to graduate. And at that moment, when he was shot and killed, his life, his dreams, his aspirations, his, his graduation, he was never able to walk to stage to get his diploma. So, uh, it is very disturbing and upsetting that now many years have passed and yet no one still has come forward with any information regarding the death of my young brother. So, uh, we are again granting that this reward, uh, be held, uh, so that we can come to a resolution for this. My mom.
Good day, councilmembers, and thanks for your listening. I am the mother of Clifton Hibbert Junior. As you know, what has called me here into action is a murder of my twenty-two-year-old son. And the case for this, the case has not been solved. I want to share a little bit about Clifton and who he was in our lives and in the community lives as well. Clif- Clifton was twenty-two years of age. Suddenly and unexpectedly gunned down. There was no cause or reason for this. Cliff was a a son, an uncle, a nephew, and a cousin, and a friend in the community. He was a role model as well. Cliff had integrity. Cliff values was service. Cliff, Cliff objective was to be a business attorney. Cliff was there for me as a single mother and there with his sister and his friends. A lot of his friends has graduated from Howard, UCLA, USC. They said, they come and tell me and said, you know, it was because of Cliff who he was in life for them. Cliff was brilliant, he was smart. He was focused. He was a mentor. The impact on this murder has left such a painful experience. First, the shock, and words really cannot ex- explain the debilitating pain that we have, we have gone through. Yes, my daughter and I are alive. And I'm grateful to that. But this murder has actually stolen a part of our life, it manifests in the way we move on forward. I look at his photos and I think of the things, the loving person who Cliff was. He didn't deserve to be shot down in his head, gun violence on the streets, he did not deserve that. The week before, we were planning his graduation, did his objectives. Two days before his murder, we were looking forward to what you were up, he was promoted on his job to be a manager. He was excited. He's wanting me to see his new car he purchased on his own in his name. He took me outside and said, "Look, mom," and got my car. I looked at him and I thought, wow, my son, his pants is pulled up, he's mature. He has, you know, the future, I was, we were looking forward to that. I was sick raising him as a single mother. Never made it to his elementary, junior high school graduation. Prayed to make it to his high school graduation, and I did, looking forward to his college graduation. It has been really debilitating. But because of love and I do believe in justice, that's why I'm here. And I want to say thank you for listening.
We also want to acknowledge, uh, former Councilwoman, woman, Jan Perry, for initially bringing this, uh, to, to the council's office and everyone from our staff and everyone from current, for current Price, Councilmember Current Price's office. Thank you, and thank you all for listening to us, and we thank you for holding up justice because we do believe in it. And we love our country and we love our city, just as my brother did.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. I have one more card, Mr. Price, on this item, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Members, this item's before us now. Madam Clerk, can you open the roll? Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passes. Thank you. Mr. Cedillo? We can move on to your presentation now.
Want to translate? You going to translate for them? Does anyone say English? I don't know.
Okay. Madam President, let me, um, welcome, um, Mr. Sandak Cole to the Los Angeles City Council, and let me introduce him to you. You see this, uh, little tan man here is a hundred years old. If he's a hundred years old, he looks like he's going to live to be about a hundred and fifty. He was born January tenth, nineteen sixteen. Uh, he met his wife in nineteen thirty-nine, they've had, uh, two sons and one daughter. As you could see, he was a wrestler, and he would travel by foot from, uh, town to town wrestling, uh, to support his family. Uh, he still welcomes anybody who wants to arm wrestle him, uh, and is engaged as an avid fan of boxing, uh, and wrestling. In nineteen eighty, Mr. Cole and his wife joined their children and came to the U.S. and resettled here in Los Angeles. A part of that move that created Koreatown, they moved to the Union Tower apartment building where he currently lives. Uh, while he didn't become a professional wrestler, he has maintained his enthusiasm for wrestling and for boxing and for the WWF. Uh, and as I said, he remains, uh, active today, uh, in those, uh, uh, sports. Uh, Mr. Cole attributes his, uh, great family and good genes, uh, his sports, healthy foods, and exercise, the ability to continue to remain active as he reaches the age, as he is, a hundred years old today. He's amazing, look at how healthy he is. And this man is not a man who's, uh, not going to see a few more years. On behalf of the First District, uh, I am happy to be here to recognize a well-lived and healthy life and wish him another hundred years, Mr. Cole. life and wish him another 100 years, Mr. Coe. You going to speak for the family? Yes.
City Council, 감사합니다. Thank you so much. 저희 아버지를 이렇게 건강하게 해주신 거는 여기 Los Angeles City 덕분인들로 알고 있습니다. 저희 아버지가 지금도 운동을 참 잘하고 계세요. 그리고 음식도 가리지 않고 잘 드시고 계시거든요. 다 감사한 거는 이렇게 불러주시고 저희 아버지를 위해서 불러주신 거 정말 감사드립니다. 예, 앞으로도 제가 열심히 아버지 건강하게 하겠습니다.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Basically, yeah, we want to thank the councilmembers and the city in recognition of our grandfather. And, yeah, we're constantly grateful for just our city, and we strive to continue to look after him and do our best to do our part in the community as well. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you very much. Come on. Councilman Sadio?
Mr. Ru?
I just wanted to rise to join in the celebration for Mr. Coe. Actually, J. Coe, his grandson, is a friend of mine, and we went to UCLA together. We were classmates and also served on the Alumni Association. Coe 아버지 생일 축하합니다. 그리고 건강하게 100년 더 살으세요. And J., thank you for coming and accompanying your grandfather. I only wish your parents were here also to see this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 36.
Item 36, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item 36. Is Mr. Previn in the room? Mr. Previn is not in the room. That concludes cards for this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell, you have a special introduction, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just this morning, we had a press conference in the, at the mayor's office announcing the creation of the Transgender Advisory Council through the City of Los Angeles Human Relations Commission. It is a community-led body that will advise elected officials and city departments on issues important to the transgender community in Los Angeles. And I'd like the members to please rise of the Transgender Advisory Council. And, excuse me, the members are Karina Samala, Diana Felice Oliva, Jayden Fields, James Wen, Jasmine Creighton, Justine Gonzalez, Talia Betcher, and Terry J. Courageous men and women who are putting out front and elevating the cause of the transgender community so that we can spread enlightenment, understanding, and the embracing of diversity across this great city and across this great nation. Thank you so much. I look very forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell. Congratulations, and thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 36. Thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
Item 37, call special for cards.
Patricia McAllister on item 37.
Yes, item 37, communication from the general manager of the Housing Community Investment to adopt a resolution of issuing of 25 million for the development of the Sealmar Court Apartments. As we all know, we have about 40,000 homeless in Los Angeles. Eighty percent of those, I'll say 30,000 are African-American. I see all of this housing being built, not all, there's not a lot, but the ones that are built, we don't have a quota for African-Americans. What you're doing is you're moving in illegal aliens into this affordable housing. That's why we have all these tents around the city. We have enough housing for Americans. We don't have enough housing for illegal aliens. We need to make sure that illegal aliens are not moved into these new developments, and we need to make sure that we have quotas. If you don't have citizenship in this nation, it doesn't even matter if you have children born here. You're not supposed to be in this affordable housing. Now, I disagree with this project because there's nowhere in here where it says it will be housing Americans. When I go by these tents and give people clothing and whatnot, I see black people and white people living in these tents. I have not yet seen a Mexican or an Asian living in these homeless tents. Now, Asian is, the Asians are the second largest, second-largest illegal alien population in this city.
You need to speak to the item, item 37.
Excuse me? What did you say?
You need to speak to the item. Item 37 is regarding the housing project.
That's what I'm speaking to. Now, I don't think we need to increase the obligation to, from five, to 5,975,000. I think what they have is fine, and I think that we need, we need some kind of monitoring of these funds. If we don't have monitoring of these funds and who's moving into these housing units affordable, we're left with where we are now, people living in tents on the street.
Next speaker, Donna Pierman, on item 37.
Okay, 10:50. Okay, I completely agree with her. This last speaker that came up, we need to have affordable housing done for the American citizens and for our veterans who are still, they can't even get on their disability because they don't have a home. So they don't have an address so they can get their mail. And yes, we do need to have it for the American blacks, we need to have it for the white people and for our poor.
Donna, you need to speak to the item.
The item is $250,000 for affordable housing, and I believe that most of that in that area is probably not even affordable housing. You have a certain amount, a small amount of money that's used for affordable housing, and a huge amount of the area is with huge amount, huge rents with only like 5% that ends up being affordable. So this is just a waste of time, and I thoroughly disagree with it. One minute.
There are no more cards on this item, Madam Clerk. I'd like to move to adopt the CIO's report that has been circulated. Now, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Can we send this item forthwith? Let's move on to item 30.
Thirty, call special for cards.
John Walsh blogging at J. Walsh Confidential. Item 30 concerns the installation of the name of Ralph Lawler on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Great. I first set foot on Hollywood Walk of Fame in 1976, before some of you were born. You could eat off the, off the stars, it was so clean. Now it's filthy, the stars are broken. It's a disgrace. We put it up on our website, go to J. Walsh Confidential, and you'll see the worst 10 worst stars on Hollywood Boulevard. And the newer ones fall apart earlier than the later ones. I mean, the later ones fall apart earlier than the newer ones, and the subway tunneling complicated matters. It is a national disgrace.
That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's move on to item 33.
Item 33, call special for cards.
Doug Haynes, item 33. Is there a Doug Haynes here?
Good morning. My name's Doug Haynes. I'm with the La Mirada Neighborhood Association, and I really just have a simple request for one of the items on this agenda, and it involves the Cornell Apartments complex. I've included for your review photos and letters regarding the fact that on this property there is a historic Pueblo Revival Home by master architect Henry Hardwood Hewitt that was built in 1920. If you've looked at the photos, you'll see how gorgeous it is. All we've been asking, and we're actually in litigation on this matter right now, is that this house be preserved as part of this development. We have negotiated potentially a settlement to include the house, so I'd like that the motion that you have before you be amended to include that so that retention of the Airbar House be a condition of approval, so that both the city and the developer in our community are all on board. And just real briefly, because I have a little bit of time, I want to read to you some of the comments that were made. Fran Offenheiser, who was the Architect of Record on the restoration of Union Station, there's broad professional support for the Airbar residents. The L.A. Conservancy and Hollywood Heritage strongly advocate preservation of the residents. Also, the Conservancy stated in their letter, "The Conservancy maintains our belief that the Airbar residence at 1601 North Hobart Boulevard is architecturally significant and qualifies as a historic resource." And also, ICF International, which did the review for the Housing Department on the 106 review for this matter, said, "We believe a strong argument can be made that 1601 North Hobart Boulevard is National Register eligible." So thank you very much for your time, and hopefully we'll be able to resolve this so that this beautiful home will be retained and be part of the development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker on item 33 is Donna Pierman, followed by Patricia McAllister, item 33.
It's strange that we have CRA money over here, excess CRA money now suddenly going for loans. That seems to be a very strange thing, and it doesn't say exactly what these loans, what interest rate these places are having to pay to go along with this loan, how long the loan goes for, and whether this is the best place to use loans on huge developments for more, for pretend affordable housing. So I don't like anything that, I think with the CRA, they stole the money from us, and now all of a sudden you're giving these loans for these big, huge, ugly developments for pretend affordable housing. So I'm not for it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Patricia McAllister on item 33.
Okay, I agree with A, the Hollywood Community Corporation for the apartments at 1600 to 1608 North Toronto, because I know, seen that community, and I think it's mixed. You know, it's white, black. I don't see a lot of illegals over there. But I'm against, well, numbers, letter C, SROs, we know there are African-Americans down there, that's Skid Row. I'm sick of seeing housing on Skid Row. We need to tip bombs Skid Row, get rid of it, and get the black people in affordable housing. Now, B, the Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, that's illegal, that's illegal alien area, South Central, they have killed the blacks over there, and they, they have that community. B is, that's illegal alien, that's 3501 and 3509 South Central. That is where illegal aliens are housed. We need to stop building houses in illegal alien predominant communities because blacks and others are not going to move in there. There's too much violence. The Latinos will shoot them up and kill them and everything else. So we don't need this. I don't see anywhere, every time I come here, I see nothing that says South Central. That's where a lot of blacks are. Why aren't we building affordable housing in South Central? You're building it in these illegal alien communities, and that should be illegal. When Donald Trump's get in office, when Donald Trump gets in office, it's president.
You need to speak to the item, item 33.
I don't appreciate this. Every time I come in here, you're building housing in communities where there are predominant illegal aliens, and I don't see anything for black people. Black people make up 80% of the homeless, and you guys are just ignoring black people. We have three blacks on this council, this Negro right here.
No, no, Ms. McAllister, you're not going to single out councilmembers. You need to speak on the issue. Thank you. That concludes our cards on this item. Madam Clerk, can you open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
The fourth with for Mr. Sadio on item 33. Let's move on to item 29.
Item 29, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, Eric Previn on item 29. Mr. Previn is not here.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is one of your sneaky direct sale of property. First, you eminent domain somebody's property, then it's the city's property, and then the city sells it to a favored developer. Here we have city-owned property located on Aqueduct Avenue adjacent to Stag Street. Nowhere here does it say how much money. I think it's $1. You're charging somebody $1. It's a little piece of space that often that a developer needs to destroy our neighborhoods. And therefore, you sell them this piece of property, the tiny piece of property, it completes the full take, and then they build a skyscraper, but we have an anti-skyscraper measure on the ballot, no on, yes on R2D2.
That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's move on to item 3.
Item 3, call special for cards.
Allison Korn on item 3, followed by Chris Diamond. I don't think your mic is on. Hold on for just a second. Can you, want to try again? We're having technical issues. Try again, ma'am.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
This is in reference to the city council's vote today to renew the Los Feliz Business Improvement District. I hope that you have had some time to read the protests that have already been filed on this matter. When I came here today, I have 11 more protests that I received. I'd like to submit to someone for the council file.
Yes, you can give it to our...
Thank you.
Sergeant, thank you.
We have not been able to meet the threshold required of 51% to automatically dissolve the Los Feliz Business Improvement District. What I will tell you is of the 50 protests that we have, other than the Griffith Observatory, the Los Angeles Zoo, and Griffith Park, these are the shop owners, the restaurateurs, that they're the shopkeepers that make Los Feliz what it is. Little Dom's, the Dresden, Chi Dynasty, Farfala, Czechies Pizza, all, so many of the storefronts in Los Feliz would like to dissolve this bid. The reason that we'd like to do this is we feel that there's a duplication in the tax, the assessment that we pay as businesses in Los Feliz. And right now, the bid uses that money for tree trimming, sidewalk washing, and trashcan pickup. We really feel very positively that our taxes already pay for these items, and certainly Mr. Ru knows, he has discretionary funds that can help us with this kind of $40,000 expenditure a year. We'd very much like to instead invest our money to dovetail on the very robust tourism trade that's currently happening in Los Angeles and create marketing for Los Feliz Village to bring more traffic and economic stability for our small businesses. What I'd like to ask today is, I feel very strongly that we can reach the 51%, but I'd like to ask for continuance, if we could have this matter decided perhaps in a couple of weeks or a month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Chris Diamond. Next speaker is Chris Diamond, followed by Rafika Zabian.
My name's Chris Diamond, and I own Rockwell Table and Stage in Los Feliz. And the only thing I could say is, I was really shocked a couple weeks ago to see that Allison, that owns the Los Feliz Ledger, sent out a letter accusing that all of us on the bid have been misappropriating funds. I, for one, can say that on the issue of tree trimming, I went to the mayor's office and had a contact there, and I was able to get the tree trimming done by city taxes and not by any of the funds that we raised for the bid. For the last four years, I don't think I've ever seen Allison attend one of our bid meetings. And in all those meetings, she sends a representative or in many of those meetings, and the next week, there's nothing but horrible articles about the bid in her publication. And I just wanted to say that this is very upsetting to me as a business owner in the community, and I certainly don't think this is fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rafika Zabian. Hope I pronounced that correctly, sir.
Zarian. I am a long-term lifetime Felician, that's what we call ourselves from Los Feliz. I'm a business owner. I work in Los Feliz. I'm on the board as a board member with the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District. It's not the Los Feliz Business Improvement District. I'm also a board member on the Los Feliz Improvement Association. I'm very active in my community. I joined the bid so that I could merge the people who live in the community with businesses in our community, because we all know that if people stop shopping in our area, these businesses could disappear, and then our community could change overnight drastically. We've worked diligently. As Chris Diamond was saying, we all care about our community. I don't like the fact that our name is being trashed every other month. I don't like the fact that I walk into a restaurant that I go to frequently to have breakfast, and the owner attacks me verbally last Friday to tell me that I'm a thief. I don't know where the numbers are coming from. We did talk to the city clerk's office. We did get numbers yesterday, and I'm just appalled that this kind of behavior is allowed, and that we, as good citizens of our community, are doing everything to keep the streets clean. The merchants that I spoke to have all said, yes, they were visited by Allison Cohen, and they were disgusted. They all also said that they back us 100%. This was sideswiped to us the other day on Friday, so we didn't even know that this was going to be occurring today. I thank you for your time, and hopefully we can move forward as a business improvement district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker is Marty Cavoo. I don't know if I pronounced, can barely read the last name, but I believe it's Cavoo. Marty, and then the next speaker is Joan Abreu.
Sure. I'm Marty Carey, and I'm--
Oh, Marty, okay.
Marty, yeah. So, I'm a business owner in Los Feliz as well. I've been there since 2004. My father actually built a building in Los Feliz, and that's how our business moved over there. Throughout the years, I've seen Los Feliz dramatically improve and different types of businesses come in, and has improved our business per se as well. Due to that fact, I have recently joined the board as well, just to bring fresh ideas and fresh concepts to improve the area as well. I've seen the bid do a hard work diligently as far as cleaning up the area and making sure we don't have homeless visitors and things of that nature. So, it's just improved the environment entirely. So, and that's why I joined the bid, to enhance the capacity of what the people have been doing on the board as well. So, I just want to make sure that everybody knew that the bid actually does work and provide services to the businesses. And as a business owner and a volunteer, I really would like to make sure that this bid stays intact. Thank you.
I'm also in support--
Excuse me, I haven't called the next speaker. It looks like an H, so is it John?
John, John.
Abreu?
Abreu. Yes. I am a business owner in Los Feliz for many years as well. I've been on the board now for, this is my third two-year term. And I have to say, it's a little disturbing when one is accused of using these funds for other purposes other than just doing something for the neighborhood, which is all of our intent. I have to say that we are transparent as can be. I know there's been some situations where Ms. Cohen has had some problems with what the money's been going. She has reviewed all of those, all the documents, and we're open to having anybody come to the meetings and just kind of volunteer. I mean, we are all volunteer. Nobody, and we're there, we do what we can, and we're, you know, we would welcome her help too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Serrano.
Good morning. I'm speaking in support of a renewal of the contract for the Los Feliz Village bid for 2016. I have been acting as president for the bid for probably the last six years. I wanted to address one issue. Of course, there is a small group of, small business owners that are protesting our renewal, spearheaded most specifically by Allison Cohen of the Los Feliz Ledger. A letter was sent to all these business owners stating that we had siphoned funds in the amount of over $1 million. So, I do want to address that. We did get from the city clerk's office that from 2002 to 2015, we collected a total of $733,000 and $641, 733,641. We average, yearly, we collect average, on an average basis, $52,403. We have fixed expenses, which include annual trash collection, insurance, taxes, and financial review, the city administrative costs, and our social media assistant. Those come out to a little over $26,000, which leaves us a little over $24,000 to actually do all the things that we attempt to do on behalf of about 300 businesses in the village. We are an all-volunteer board. We're very, very committed to our community and bettering that community. We are open to having anybody participate and do this with us. We have very few volunteers. I've yet to see Ms. Cohen stand side by side with me to clean a street, or to participate in a Village Affair event, to participate actively in our Hollywood Festival, to help us advertise anything on our behalf without some benefit to her. So, I please urge you to go ahead and renew our contract for 2016. We have a lot planned to do, including installing big-belly trashcans in our village with Council District Four and David V. assisting. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes cards on this item. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the members of the Los Feliz community and the Business Improvement District for coming here to City Hall today to speak on this matter of the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District renewal. And, you know, Los Feliz is a unique area that's tucked between Griffith Park and Barnesdale Park. And I just want to say, we rely on the bid for helping augment city services. Unfortunately, many times, as we've discussed yesterday with the sidewalk repair, we are unable to do everything that needs to be done on a timely basis. And that's why we rely on bids throughout the city to help with the cleanup, help with the tree trimming, everything that we sometimes take some time to do. And I want to acknowledge that the bid, not just the Los Feliz Village bid, but bids throughout the city have done some incredible work to revitalize and beautify the neighborhood. But there's always room for improvement, which is why, you know, I was happy to support Councilmember Felipe Fuentes's motion earlier this month that looked into best practices for business improvement districts citywide. He cited including looking at program structures, term limits, zoning restrictions, legal parameters, private and public funding, and how these programs leverage other economic development funding or incentives. As such, I will hold the bid accountable, and I look forward to working with the Los Feliz community to make sure we address the challenges that our city faces in a productive and productive, in a productive and proactive way. And I encourage my colleagues for an I vote for the renewal of the bid.
Okay, thank you. Let's, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, let's move on to item 23. Mr. Sadio, item 23, sir.
Yes, Mr. President, I want to acknowledge many of the renters groups that are here today. Those who are here-- Those who are here, I want to recognize the renters groups that have come. They've been working very hard. A whole range of them are here, and I want to applaud them, and I want to applaud the landlords, because for the last two and a half years, we have been working with the landlords, with the Apartment Association, and doing something that evidently wasn't done before, and that's reaching compromise. And we've been negotiating, and it takes a lot of courage to work towards compromise, because there's always the chance you don't get the best deal. But what I find, and what we're finding, is that the more they sit together, the more they hammer things out, we get to the deal that both sides can support. And so, I want to applaud both of them. They're both here today. I know we've exhausted public comment, but I wanted us to recognize their presence and commend them for engaging in the process. And so--
But thank each and every one of you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, give yourselves a round of applause. And Mr. Sadio, you should be commended for doing the, taking the difficult road.
I commend my staff. They've been engaged in the type of negotiations you and I are familiar with for many, many years, and we're reaching results that people agree on and people are implementing. This motion will create the rent registry. We will join cities like Santa Monica and West Hollywood. We will move forward. We will have data to provide both renters and landlords to let us know what is the status of rent in the city, how does it affect renters and landlords, and how can we use that data to improve affordability, attract affordability, and make sure that the city does all that it can to move us away from being the most expensive city to live in towards the most affordable city to live in. So, with that, I ask colleagues for an I vote.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with.
Good job, Mr. Sadio. Fourth with. Done. Mister, and that will go fourth with. Mr. Weezer, item 19, is it?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, this item here is a cleanup motion that was presented as a means to make it city policy that we will now decentralize city services with respect to homelessness and to get away from the failed containment policy. It is a cleanup motion, although we have already adopted it as a principle in our comprehensive strategic plan for homelessness. I want to thank Councilmember Harris Dawson for agendizing this and moving it forward. But I thought I'd call it special just to make it apparent and to put it out again to remind ourselves around this horseshoe, and along with our staffs and our city family, that as we move forward and provide much desperately needed homeless services, that we are looking to do it in a way that is decentralized and no longer attempt to locate those services in areas that have been historically designated as containment areas for homeless services. This will not only help the city as a whole, but it will help individuals experiencing homelessness. Studies have shown that those individuals who need to get back on their feet, that if they are in an area that they're familiar with, with a network of friends that they could depend on, it's easier for them to get back out of homelessness and get back on their feet. So, this is just a reminder about the direction of going with respect to homeless services provided by the city. Thank you.
Let's, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Sadio.
Yes, earlier we were missing calling 38, item 38, fourth with.
Okay, item 38, fourth with. Okay, let's go to item 35. I'm going to do a minute on this, Mr. City Attorney, because this is just setting the date for the hearing. So, I want to call up Donna Pierman, Linda Romney, Patricia McAllister.
When you do something right, I congratulate you. Thank you for having May 18 public meeting and to amend the mayor's budget. You can hear the public speak and what's important to them. And to me and the people in the San Fernando Valley, the Van Nuys video conferencing coming on is as important. The Van Nuys video, VNNC, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council wants video conferencing and voted for it. And I will personally ask the other neighborhood councils in the San Fernando Valley how important it is to them to get Van Nuys video conferencing. And I will tell you the results on May 18. I'm sure I can get the support. Need to find better ways to get revenue, and just ask Donald Trump. So, you don't need to take out the hides of 46 people with liens. And so, we need to come up with good ways that will help all of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. So, thank you for May 18.
Thank you. So, if I could get the next speaker, please come forward. Linda Romney, Patricia McAllister, and Daniel Healy. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I would like to thank you for having the hearing in the Van Nuys location. As you can remember, a few years ago, the San Fernando Valley launched an effort to succeed. And quite frankly, we are being given the rear of the bus. You receive the majority of the money from the San Fernando Valley, yet as far as services and community participation, there is very little afforded the San Fernando Valley. We would like to have the Van Nuys office open at all times, including the continuation of this hearing for the mayor's budget. And anything else that pertains thereto, such as the city commissioner, the planning department, instead of having the individuals come to the Los Angeles location where their property is located in the valley, it should be in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I can get Ms. McAllister, Mr. Healy, a karate parek maybe? Yes, ma'am.
I studied this budget. It's online, the 2016 and 17 budget. In this budget, the mayor has put over $1 billion, billion with a B, in the police department. Now, I find this to be outrageous. He put very little in housing. Now, even the mayor in 2016, he said that he spent $100 million on the homeless. And the news media went to him, and they said, $100 million, all these tents we got out here, and people homeless. He said, oh, most of it went for police. Now, let me tell you one thing about the homeless. They are the least troublesome people out there. They're vulnerable, they don't bother anybody. You don't need $100 million for the police. You know what that tells me? You guys are stealing like I don't know what. This is what that tells me. We need housing for the homeless. They don't need the police around them, pointing guns at them, which we don't see them doing. So, somebody needs to explain to me why the mayor needs $1 billion for the police.
Thank you. So, again, Mr. Healy, karate pareks, a Louis Ramirez? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President and City Council. Thank you for having me here. I'd like you to imagine a Los Angeles where every young person has a place in their community where they can engage in positive activities after school, explore their talents and creativity, get counseling and mentoring, and acquire skills for college and careers, where every youth feels that they matter and can make a difference. Imagine gang violence and crime going down by 65% as we finally get to the root causes. We can make this vision a reality. The cost of LAPD has risen 40% in the last 10 years and is now at $2.57 billion. We invest 70 times more in law enforcement than we do in youth development. If we continue to prioritize a suppression approach to public safety and do not meaningfully invest in our youth, youth will continue to fall through the cracks. If we were investing in our youth at the same rate as San Francisco's investing in their youth, we'd be investing not-- their youth, we'd be investing not $36 million, but $700 million.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, then I'll have a Luis, Luisa Ramirez, and a Jasmine Nang? Yes.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Kruti Parek, and I'm so excited to share with you that there was a 50-mile march for L.A. for Youth. Woo-hoo! I walked 10,000 steps for young people yesterday. 10,000 steps! Marquis, isn't that awesome? 10,000 steps, because I know that if you redirected dollars away from law enforcement, you could actually have an effective youth development department. Today, you know, I give my condolences to the family that came up about their 22-year-old that got shot and killed. You know, we celebrated a 100-year-old man right after that moment, and I feel like we have, we're in a critical moment in L.A. City where we can actually create L.A. City so that no more young people have to die, and no more mothers have to grieve, and no more big sisters have to come and ask you, what happened to that investigation? Young people are brilliant. There are so many incredible suggestions. Please listen and invest in a working group to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll get Mr. Ramirez, Jasmine Nang, and I think I have Alexandria Alex?
Yes, sir.
Hi there. Well, my name is Luis Ramirez, and I'm here for the L.A. for Youth campaign. We're here, not asking for much, just at least 1% of the budget of youth developing the department. The reason is, I'm attending this continuation school that doesn't have much resources, and observing some of my classmates, I just realized that, made me realize that as strong as they are, they could eventually go through so much that they're gonna need some support. And where else are they gonna get that support if there's no youth centers, well, at least around my community? So, yeah, it's kind of intimidating, but it was pretty cool. But that's all I had to say. Thank you. What's your name?
I'm just Herb.
Oh, Herb, well, thanks for, well, thanks for all you guys, I guess, listening to me. So that's all I had to say. Have a good day.
Now, you're a breath of fresh air. Come back, okay? Let's give him a round of applause. He was nervous a little, but he worked right through it. Yeah, it was impressive. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Ready? My name is Jasmine. Thank you for your patience with our young people here who are speaking publicly, maybe for the first time, so a lot of jitters even for myself, so mad props to my young people. I speak to you as an educator, a continuation high school educator, a parent of a young child in elementary school, and a parent organizer. As someone who has been privileged enough to receive the benefits of having a youth center or a school that acted as a youth center, right, as a community center, I could be there after school, I could be there on the weekends, they provided support for my immigrant single mother, that we think about reallocating funds that are in our city budget into youth centers and into our youth, right? Make the same investment that, right now, we're making into the police, into our young people, to make sure they have as bright of a future as I had and as one that I can provide to my child. I also ask if you would like to, if we could pass these around, just about what happened yesterday. We were also on TV, and we had some media coverage, but, so you can even get some more information about us at the Youth Justice Coalition, and what kind of services we would like to provide, and the services we provide now. Thank you.
Thank you. And if this is Alexandria, then I need Dania, and is it Monserrat? And Kim? Yes.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Alex, and I came today to speak and be heard, so if you can give me your attention, about agenda item 35, and how many youth centers, well, how youth centers will affect us. I'm tired of drug dealers selling on corners every day. I see the same drug dealer selling crack to kids on Western and Florence every day. If we had youth centers, they wouldn't be exposed to that, well, or drugs or violence, because they would have something to actually live for. Most kids are lost in the road, so they go to the streets, and the streets just eat them alive. But why should we let them continue to do that, generation to generation, when we can really make a change? We need you guys to think about the positive you will be doing if you bring these youth centers in with your budget. Let's have more faith and less doubt. Less doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourselves.
Hi, my name is Dani Atanian, and this is...
And I'm Montar Barrios. We want to speak on item 35. We are... sorry.
We are students to ask for more youth centers. Personally, this youth center has benefited me getting an education, having somewhere to go do something productive, instead of becoming the next criminal in the streets.
All we ask for is the 1% of law enforcement budget. It's not a lot to ask for. The lives of young people all across Los Angeles will benefit from this. Thank you for listening to our voice and the voices of thousands of young people across Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming down. So do I have a Kim and a Tiara Early?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Kim McGill. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition, and we're proud to be here to launch the L.A. for Youth campaign for 2016. As you know, L.A. has the youngest population in the nation, the highest number of young people living in foster care. We lock up more young people than anyplace else in the world. We have the largest juvenile halls, the largest probation department, and the largest investment in law enforcement of anywhere in the nation and anywhere in the world. With just a small reclaiming of community resources from law enforcement, we could do so much. We're asking for 5% of the LAPD and city attorney's budget that in turn would give us $136 million to establish a youth development department. With those funds, we could provide 25,000 youth jobs, 50 youth centers, and 500 intervention workers in the streets of Los Angeles, and also to work the schools. For many of us at the Youth Justice Coalition, this is a very personal effort. We started our experiences as young people in the justice system. As opposed to having schools and after-school programs and summer jobs, we spent time in juvenile halls and camps and youth authorities.
Thank you.
We urge you to build a new future for young people in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much. Tiara?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am a little nervous.
Don't worry, just relax. It's all right.
Hi, my name is Tiara Early. I'm here to speak on the 5% budget that equals to $137 million. We want you to create youth centers and jobs and intervention workers in our community instead of funding the police. I, Tiara Early, am a student at Free L.A. High, and I am a youth. I hope you can recognize the urgency and immediate intention that our young people across Los Angeles need. We don't ask for much, just 5% of L.A. law enforcement budget to invest in our future and the youth in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, oh, no, I have one more card. I almost forgot you. So if I could get William Morrison. I almost forgot you.
You know, I would've came walking up, I would've reminded you. In fact, I was just hearing the comments, and I came up here, I'm William Rodriguez Morrison, California Republican Assembly Senator, Director, and Treasurer. They're saying you want, these students were saying they want to make cuts to LAPD. I checked the budget, and of course, we already know, on the pension plan for elected officials, 10 years ago it was 3%, it's at 25%. If you're gonna take any money to put for the youth, take it from your retirement program that's in the books. So remember, I'm grabbing right now the third rail, Mr. Wesson, so you know what that means. I'm gonna hold on to this issue, needs to be addressed. If you want to bring back more services, your elected officials, you're there to serve this community. It's an honor to serve. It's not about a stipend on what you're getting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That conclude, oh.
Bill Watkins, I don't know if you got a card? Okay.
Just identify yourself.
Hello, Bill Watkins. Hi, Jose, and everybody. No re... I hope everyone's keeping tabs of LAPD Police Commission, Matt Johnson, and the group over there, the mayor's appointment, at their seeking... yeah.
Now, go on, let us...
Yeah, it's general comment. Sorry, I thought it was public comment time.
Oh, okay. All right, so that concludes comment on this specific item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's move to item one. Mr. Walsh on item one. Linda Romney on item one.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers are moving forward, there are requests to continue items G, O, Z, A, F, and A, P for two weeks to March 29th. A request to continue F, A, G, A, H, A, J, A, K, and A, T for 30 days to April 13th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Here's where I really annoy you, this is where I praise you. Remember, when you do a good job, I'm the first one to praise you, and when it comes to tenant issues, I have never had any problems with the city, nor do I know anybody who had any serious problems with the city. These are protests, people who got caught, landlords, and what happens here is the landlord doesn't repair your apartment, you go to the city, and then from then on, the landlord pays the rent not, you pay your rent, not to the landlord, you pay your rent to the city, to the landlord fixes things up, and then the landlord starts getting your rent. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to praise you.
Ms. Romney? Linda Romney? Ms. Linda Romney, please come forward. Look, we're being, the meeting is being harassed. Who is that?
I'm Black, man. That's who.
No, well, I can put both of you outside, and you can talk to him. Look, you don't holler in the council chambers. Do it again, you will be removed. I'm looking for, you're continuing to disrupt. Ms. Romney? Ms. Romney is not here. Let us vote on this item. Let's open the roll.
Prior to the vote, Mr. President, may I make some additional announcements? There's a request to continue A, I for two weeks to March 29th. And there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety that the following items be received and filed. One, A, D, H, K, M, P, Q, T, W, X, A, D, A, M, A, N, and A, U, as the liens have been paid in full. Additionally, the department requests that the lien amounts on one, C, be reduced to $825.25, A, S to $2,580.07, due to the receipt of partial payments, and that A, G be reduced to $1,288.56 and be continued to April 13th.
Okay. Mr. Bloomingfield?
You, item one, A, B, for two weeks.
Okay, we'll continue that to March 29th. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
To general public comment.
Okay, I'm gonna start off this time with William Rodriguez Morrison, Ms. McAllister, Eric Aries. Where's the guy? Yes, go ahead.
One minute or two minutes?
One minute.
Okay, my address is on this, where I am addressing right now, we've had a 30-year contamination in East L.A., which is Council District 14. I see we actually expanded money from this council to help Porter Ranch. The XI contamination needs to be addressed, and unfortunately, members of this council have not brought that to their attention. We all bleed red. It doesn't matter what texture or color we have, but all communities should be represented equally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McAllister, followed by Eric Aries, Bill Watkins, if you're still here. Bill, Eric Previn, if you're still here. Mr. Previn? Yes, ma'am.
I want homeowners to know that there's a program with the city called the Handy Worker Program. There's $2.8 million sitting in that fund, and it's to give you $5,000 to help you fix those violations. Go to your council members and ask them about this. If they flip you off, come down here and speak on this mic about that $5,000 that you need. Because I believe that these politicians are using that money for petty cash. Petty cash means they're routing it into their pockets and their buddies' pockets. Now, I've done some research. The illegal alien District One, with Sodio, that's what I call him, they have no liens just about.
Just address the entire council.
They have practically no liens. You know why? I believe they're using this handy worker program, and he makes sure that those owners of those buildings house those illegals, and they get what they need. District Two have very few liens. That means they're getting that money. The black community, eight districts, eight, nine, 10, they have the most. We're gonna fix this thing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Eric Aries, Mr. Watkins, I thought I'd lost you. You're next. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Eric Otis. I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action, Eric. I also represent and work with coalitions as far from Venice to the Boyle Heights, from Pacoima to council member and LAPD officer Buscayino's district in San Pedro. I'm here just to drop off a copy. Hope you all can make copies. You'll get it soon. It's a lawsuit filed on behalf of sick plaintiffs suing LAPD in the city of L.A. for the continuing practice of the illegal seizure and destroying of homeless people's property. We are very disappointed. We know there's not a consensus overall about the ongoing criminalization, but there's a lack of political will to actually do something about it. It is unfortunate us to come to this, but, you know, a comprehensive homeless strategy plan does not exempt you all from the Constitution. A badge and a gun does not exempt you from the Bill of Rights, and we're extremely hopeful that this will lead to actually constructive change towards a comprehensive plan that prioritizes permanent supportive housing while simultaneously stopping the criminalization, which does nothing to help people. The individuals here are having their tense medication, tarps destroyed during El Nino. It's a shame, and we should do, we should expect more from each other and from yourselves.
Thank you, sir. So if I can get Mr. Watkins, followed by Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Walsh. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Thanks. Sorry, I was very embarrassing before.
No, it happens.
It happens. Anyways, nice to see everyone today. Just, I want to say, please throw your support for the L.A. Police Commission at this time, Matt Johnson and that group. I cried myself to sleep on Friday night, having heard that they're gonna start drawing for non-lethal weapons before they draw for their lethal weapons. It's gonna save a lot of lives. I'm a formerly suicidal homicidal person. I mean, you just have, it's unfortunate, but it's just the way it is. I'm an alcoholic, I'm 13 years sober. I'm so glad no one shot me in the torso, you know, no one, no one just took me out. I hope the city will be glad of that someday, that they have a servant instead of a dead person. So, hi, Jose, and everybody today. Gil, and it's nice to see everyone. Throw their support there. The Police Protective League, they're gonna come at what they're trying to do and change, but the minute we draw for those non-lethal weapons, we're saving lives, and when we rehabilitate, we're gonna get community members that help us out. I'm amazed at all the change. Keep it up. Thank you.
And Bill, congratulations on your sobriety.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Walsh, followed by Donna Pierman.
You know what June 7th is? It's primary day, the day after D-Day. It's a chance for all of us to tell, and Trump is gonna be all over the city, the police are gonna be going crazy, and it's time. I tell you, you're not welcome, Mr. Trump, in this city. This is not a racist city. This is a city of blacks, browns, yellows, and whites. Oh, get together, and you're coming here, you vicious, vile piece of scum shit, and you're gonna attack us, and you're gonna try to divide us. But you will not divide us. We'll kick your fucking racist billionaire ass out of this city with peaceful, with peaceful spit all over you. You are a fucking scumbag, Mr... and I'm telling you right now, hire anybody to beat the shit out of me and then pay their legal fills, fees. I don't give a goddamn. You, Donald Trump, are a fucking billionaire scumbag racist, and none of these politicians will say it.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Pierman.
Just want to tell people, it's not an open primary. It must belong to either Republican or Democrat Party. Democrats are no longer the party that's best for the American blacks or any Americans. It's Abraham Lincoln's party, the Republican Party, and Donald Trump is the best choice for all Americans and for American blacks and evangelist. Donald Trump wants jobs for all, for all people, and wants opportunity to grow. Not Michael Rubio is for the amnesty bill that's championed by Barack Obama, allows social predators, child molesters, gang members to be, have amnesty. Criminals get amnesty. Widespread job killing is bound by Kasich and Rubio, and Ted Cruz will sit by and do nothing. Job, oh, yeah, job killing is... Job, oh, yeah, job killing is, and Hillary is for the job killing also industry. It was backed by Marco Rubio, as I said, and Kasich. So, let's vote for Donald Trump.
Okay, uh, I never thought I would say this, but, Mr. Walsh, I'm with you. Uh, what, 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 uh, what do we have, uh, left on our, uh, agenda, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted and referred. Uh, that brings us where?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members, announcements. If we could all rise in the council chambers, if everyone could please rise for adjourning motions, I will look to my left side first. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to adjourn in the memory of Taylor Force. He's not a constituent, but a lot of my constituents have been expressing outrage and, and concern of, over his death, over his murder. He's a former U.S. Army officer who was part of the Vanderbilt University tour group, who was recently stabbed to death in a terror attack that left ten others wounded in the old section of Tel Aviv last Tuesday. He was the first student in the Graduate School of, um, of Management at Vanderbilt. He was among twenty-nine students and four staff members who had gone to Israel to study global entrepreneurship. They were in Jaffa, by the Mediterranean Sea, where they were attacked, in a tourist area that I've been and probably many people here have been. He graduated from West Point in 'oh nine, was a field artillery officer in the Army until twenty-fourteen. I know yours is distraught as I am as the almost daily acts of terrorism that the citizens of Israel have faced over the past six months. The terrorism took the life of a visiting American student. These terror attacks have spread throughout the country. Israelis are on constant alert as they go about their daily lives, working, going to school, waiting for a bus, grocery shop, or walking down the street. Parents have been wounded and killed with knives and hatchets in front of their children, pregnant women have been attacked, teenagers and toddlers have been gravely injured. And now, this year, an American. We express our deepest condolences to the families who've lost loved ones. We must put pressure on the Palestinian leadership to condemn the ongoing wave of terrorism, the immediate end to the incitement of violence that they are encouraging. I want to thank Vice President Biden for his recent and strong condemnation of these attacks. He was actually in Israel, not very far from where the attack occurred, when it occurred. But I call on those in the international community who do not speak out against these crimes against humanity, because there has been a shameful lack of an international response. One of the reasons Taylor Force was there was to understand part of what was going on with the Israelis and how they were interacting with global trading. My thoughts and prayers go to the family of Taylor Force. I thank him for serving our country. I'm deeply saddened by another senseless act of terrorism, uh, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Mr. Buscaino, did I see you raise your hand?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Gabriel Mendoza, who passed away February twentieth. He was born on November twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-four, Miami, Arizona. He attended Wilmington Park Elementary School and graduated from Phoenix Banning in nineteen-fifty-three, where he played football and ran track. He earned his associate's degree from L.A. Harbor College. He continued to play football and was drafted into the U.S. Army and served in Germany. He worked at the Smart and Final for thirty-seven years and played baseball and softball until he was seventy-seven years old. Also a, a member of the Honor Guard at the VFW Post Two-Nine-Six-Seven in Wilmington. He survived by his wife of fifty-three years, Rosa, and their three children, Ronald, Monica, Madeline, and Madeline's husband, John, and Gabriel's sister, Lori, along with his four grandchildren, Gabriela, Jude, Ansel, and Simon, and many nephews, nieces, cousins, and friends. Funeral services were held yesterday, and in lieu of flowers, donations can be made in memory of Gabriel Mendoza to VFW Post Two-Six-Nine-Seven. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, I'm continuing to look to the, to my left. Now I'm going to Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Susanna Reynosa, Reynoso, a former student, teacher, athlete, and resident of Boyle Heights. Susanna was born in Teocaltiche, Jalisco, Mexico, before she moved to Boyle Heights as a little girl. She attended Belvedere and Sheridan Elementary Schools, Hollenback Middle School, and Roosevelt High School. Susanna was a great student and athlete growing up. She was involved in various competitive sports and was very active in school clubs. Her school principal, Mr. Ronquillo, described her as being a very bright student who enjoyed and excelled in all aspects of school life, including academics, student government, and athletics. After graduating from Roosevelt High School, Susanna attended Pasadena City College before earning an athletic scholarship to the College of Notre Dame in San Francisco, where she earned both her bachelor's and master's degrees. After college, she returned home to serve her community by becoming a teacher at her alma mater, Roosevelt High School. She taught Spanish and advanced placement psychology and was one of the school's most popular teachers, whose students loved her, and she loved them right back. Just as she did as a student, Susanna became fully engaged and active as a teacher, sponsoring and serving as a mentor and advisor to student organizations. She enjoyed traveling all over the world and sharing pictures of her travels with her students to show them there is a great big world out there that they should see, to learn about and change when necessary. Susanna was a loving, caring person who enjoyed helping others. She was full of life and spirit. Condolences to her family, friends, and students, who I'm sure will honor her memory by helping others as she did. She will be greatly missed. She's one of those very special people who was very active, cared about her community, and no matter how big or small the problem may be, often saw a way through it. Uh, I remember her well when I was on the school board, um, going to testify at the board meetings on various issues that she had an opinion about, and, uh, often gave us a perspective that we rarely see at those places, which was one of what life is really like at some of our schools. Roosevelt used to be one of the most overcrowded high schools, uh, west of Mississippi. Uh, thankfully, uh, now that has changed, but she was one of those teachers, uh, that was very active in making sure we built high schools in the east side so that Roosevelt could be relieved. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Mark Orferer, who was ninety-three. Um, he was born May tenth, nineteen twenty-two, in Cleveland, Ohio, and passed away on March first. Uh, he was the father of a dear friend of mine from high school, and also, uh, when I was in the State Assembly, uh, his, his son Dennis was my labor staffer for several years. After growing up in Cleveland, Mark served in the U.S. Army Air Corps during World War II, and though he was interested in engineering, he decided to take advantage of the G.I. Bill and completed medical school at Ohio State University. Uh, he met his future wife, Lenora, there, who was also a student, and they married in nineteen fifty. In nineteen fifty-five, he moved the family to Los Angeles for a psychiatric residency. He went on to qualify as a psychoanalyst and opened an office in Santa Monica where he practiced for many decades. He was a prominent member of the Los Angeles Psychoanalytical Society and Institute, holding various offices, including two terms as president. He was directly involved in the design and construction of the institute's beautiful